The next item of business is delivering an act on a memorandum of understanding between the City of Raton and Raton Little League. They did provide their proof of insurance, which I requested. And they did provide the letters and information on the status of their 501(c)(3). And I don't think there's anything any of us can do about this.
The IRS is not doing anything with each for a full year. Although it's been four years, I think they're surprised.
May I have one correction on the memorandum of understanding?
Yes.
If I believe I'm right, during the regular meeting on March 25th, the Raton City Commission approved the agreement?
No, we did not. We postponed it. Right, exactly. Yes, and the dates just need to be changed. Yeah. So approving it tonight, I guess. Hopefully we can approve it.
Other than that, I think we should approve it.
Is that a motion, Mr. Chavez?
I'll make a motion to approve the Little League memorandum of understanding with the City of Raton.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Raton and Raton Little League. Is there any discussion? It's now all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As just a general comment to the place to start, there's been a lot of effort in the last several months to make the transition as far as solid waste. And so this is a step in that process. And so what we have done here is we request bids from permitted landfills to accept Raton's solid waste in the future. We did receive two bids. One was from the Northeast New Mexico Regional Landfill. That's located in Levi or Wagon Mound if you prefer. And it's operated by GGH Wagon Mound LLC. Also, we received a bid from Midway Landfill located in Fountain, Colorado. That's operated by Waste Management. I would note to the Commission that we did receive a third bid. That bid was rejected for not being in on time. It showed up at City Hall about 24 hours too late and was returned unopened. You see the results of the bid on your second sheet of the recommendation. We had wanted to bring some options to the Commission, not necessarily confuse things, but we did ask the bidders if they would give us price for a one-year term, a two-year term, or a three-year term. And you've seen the results of that there. There is a big spread on the bids and Waste Management is the low bid. Now, I would also tell the Commission that we opened these on March 5th, but we're coming to the Commission at this time because we also wanted to consider the cost of hauling landfills because the distance is different. So we do have bids in on the hauling of Raton's solid waste to a landfill. That'll be next on the agenda, I believe. However, in our analysis that we can talk about, we did go through the evaluation and there are some variables in there, such as how many tons are you going to produce in a year. But in the evaluations and the various fluctuation of those variables, we found that Midway Landfill was the lowest bid to Raton and we have recommended award of a contract to Waste Management to take our solid waste to Midway Landfill. With that said, we have notified, we have talked to both bidders. They are fairly close when you add up the hauling. Waste Management is low in our evaluation. However, GGH Wagon Mound LLC has asked me to express to you that they would like to delay the award because they believe it should go to Wagon Mound. They really don't have a reason for doing that that they stated to us. However, they have requested the documents for their evaluation. My recommendation is still to award to Waste Management, however.
Well, on the tipping fees, it's obvious who the low bid is. I mean, Waste Management was $75,000. Seventy-five, yeah, $1,000. And Wagon Mound was $132,750. So that's a substantial difference there. It isn't quite so clear-cut on the hauling, but I'm going to trust your numbers.
Right, and I would say that following the award, we will also, we have made a recommendation to you on the hauling. Any of the bidders can take some action within a period following your award. We would follow up and provide them with the information. They could take action, so they're not precluded from, you know, filing a protest if they wanted to. I don't see any basis for that. They did not state a basis for that. They didn't make contact with me and I am passing that along to the Commission, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the work that you have done.
I would just say we have a competitive situation on both the tipping and the hauling, so I think we're getting the best deal for our rate payers here. We were very pleased with the outcome of both of these.
Now, I want to thank Mr. Berry and Mr. Phillips for all the day of that. It's been a long time getting to this point, but we got there.
For the benefit of the people present, the Wagon Moun, the Waste Management from Midway is $15 per ton, whereas the Wagon Mound is up, if I'm not mistaken, this is recently up, wasn't it? To $26.95. So just to keep the people apprised of what the difference is and what needs to be done.
Mr. Berry, I also want to, with the Midway dump, like, is there any penalties on that one, like there is with the Wagon Mound?
You know, I guess outside of just the price factor, Commissioner, we have found that Wagon Mound tends to close if the wind is blowing or if there's a weather condition. And certainly this time of year, they're closed frequently. And that has caused some difficulty for our crew because you can't effectively store solid waste. It comes every day, so that's a little bit difficult to deal with. Waste Management has assured us that they do not close. They have the same problem with wind and wind-blown waste, but they handle that up there. They pick it up. It's actually a little easier for us to go to Midway where there's not an effective closure. That doesn't, you can't really factor that into the price, but it's a little easier that way. There's not a special waste hauling permit in Colorado like there is in New Mexico. Our hauler would have to have it because they're still hauling to short distances in New Mexico. So it's not really a factor there. I think the closure is the only other factor that we saw. I believe they're both licensed, Subtitle D, landfills. That refers to a federal law, the Resource Conservation Recovery Act, that Subtitle D designation, and they both are designated as Subtitle D in the RECP. So they're both qualified bids, and there really is not another factor there.
Okay, thank you for it.
I would tell the Commission that when we talk about the hauling bid, what we need to do following that point is complete process of registration of our ramp to use our new Wilkins trailers. We have had some correspondence back and we need to file some additional information with them. In order to operate the Wilkins trailers, we need a source of hydraulic power at the landfill. So we have made some recommendations to the city manager on that. We would anticipate that within about a month, we'll have those items taken care of and we'll be ready to, we'll be ready to go. I guess the other issue would be licensing of the Wilkins trailers and having those ready to go.
Thank you.
Mr. Berry, do you have any opinion that Wagon Mound may file a grievance against this? Or challenge the bid?
They did call and they weren't happy. I don't know what their basis would be. They want to examine the documents. But yeah, if they, if they see a reason, yeah, I think they would file a challenge.
Well, in my opinion, fellow Commissioners, if they were that upset, they would have sent the representative here tonight to explain it.
But I don't think we would take any action on this within 30 days. And so we'll give them a chance to do that. I think if they were, if they would like to take that option, so.
If I'm hearing you correctly, there's no problem in going ahead and awarding this at this time?
My recommendation is to award it at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept a bid from Midway Landfill, Fountain, Colorado, Waste Management.
I'll second that one.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to award the contract for the tipping fees to Solid Man, Waste Management in Midway, Colorado. I think that should be a roll call. Okay, and we have a roll call, will we please?
Commissioner Finelli?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Segada?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor M.
Yes. Motion passes. The next is to deliberate and consider the award of a solid waste transportation contract. And do you have some more information for us on that, or?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, we did open bids on April 1st for hauling solid waste. We did receive five bids, all from local firms. The low bid was submitted by BTU Block and Concrete. They were significantly lower than the next bid, more than 20%. We did bid this for, this followed the opening of the MSW bid, so we did set this for a two-year period. That's what we would anticipate, that both contracts are executed for a two-year period in accordance with your recommendation there. And to go to Midway Landfill, you can see that the BTU bid is $422.50. The next closest bid submitted by RW Bud Construction, $555. So we are recommending award of a two-year contract to BTU Block and Concrete for the hauling.
Thank you.
I would remind the Commission that what we're bidding on is we're asking them to pull our trailers, the Wilkins trailers, on a daily basis to the landfill. It'll be loaded by our crew. This contractor will pick it up, take it to the landfill. Meanwhile, we'll fill the other Wilkins trailer and have that ready for them the next day. The City would be responsible for normal wear on the Wilkins trailers, which would be tires, tarp, the walking floor, those kind of parts. But the contractor would be responsible for his truck or keeping that operational to pull on the highway.
Thank you. Mr. Berry, does that mean that we would, the City would have to insure our own trailers?
We would insure our trailers, yes. But the contractor will supply insurance also. So they would, in fact, they would come under our insurance, but they would also be insured by the contractor. There is a policy where a truck driver hauling somebody else's trailer, there's a policy called a Bailey policy for that. So that's a requirement that they would give us their Bailey policy, plus their general liability. We do have a fuel escalator in the contract, and it says that if the average monthly price of fuel goes up 15%, we would adjust to that. There's also a de-escalator, so if it went down by an average of 15%, we would pay less for that. We're going to a two-year term.
And we're looking in that on a monthly basis?
We would track that on a monthly basis. And BTU does have a, they subscribe to a service that does that. So they would present that data to us. But somebody from the City would want to keep track of that. So we've established a base price on April 1st for the price that we're starting out, and then we would track that as we went.
And would we reconcile that on monthly basis or on an annual basis?
What we say is that we would average over a month, we would average it on a monthly basis. So we'd reconcile it on a monthly basis.
Okay, so we adjust our costs monthly?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
If it's outside of that 15%, if it's less than 15%, there's no difference.
It's small.
Correct. But we would anticipate the contractor will bill monthly and we will do that reconciliation at the time of billing.
Make a motion to award the contract to, consider the award to solid waste transportation contract?
To BTU?
BTU, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thanks. We have a motion and a second to award the solid waste transportation contract to BTU. Is there any other discussion or anything else you want to?
I'd like to take this time, we happened to be in the office when they had to open the bids, and the professionalism of Mr. Phillips.
The young gentleman.
They invited us in and we actually saw him open each bid. And it was very informative and appreciate you guys including us in that. And your professionalism was great, even to the guys that were mad.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote now?
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Segada?
Yes.
Commissioner Finelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Mayor M.
Yes. Motion passes. Our next item of business is delivering an act on Resolution 2014-13, Budget Adjustment Number 7 for fiscal year 2014. Mr. McGowan?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you can see, that we're looking at purchasing a truck. We have to have one to be used out there that we would have to put a wet kit on anyway. And Mr. Phillips and Mr. Berry have been working with us and working with Joe that's doing our sanitation study. And we had said all along that hopefully, you know, we had originally thought that we would purchase three trailers, and we'd only purchased two, thinking that we would be able to buy one of use. And so what you're looking at here is, and we think that we're asking your approval, and then Mr. Berry and Mr. Phillips is going down to look at it. And if they say it's a go, then we've already given them approval. We'll take care of the situation. And because we're doing, we don't want someone else. And we think that they lowered the truck by $5,000, and we're looking at a brand-new floor in the trailer. This will be with a brand-new floor. So you can see that it was $53,000, but we've added another $1,000 to get it here. So I'm recommending then again, thank you, Mr. Berry and Mr. Phillips for helping us with this, and they will go down and check this out.
Oh, there's two different items here. So I just would like to know how, what, which is which? There's for equipment and there's also for a vehicle.
The truck is the $15,000 and the trailer is?
The equipment, the $39. Thank you.
And it was really $38, but we've added $1,000 to get it back here.
Right.
From Plainview, is that correct?
That is correct.
It's what, five years old or something?
It's a 2001 model trailer. The floor is being reinstalled by a Wilkins subsidiary in Plainview that is going to warranty the floor. The tractor is currently in use over the road hauling, much like the contract to BTU is. We looked at other power options. Buying an electronic unit would be somewhere near about $28,000 power these units. The truck kind of serves sole purpose. It'll provide hydraulic power and we could shopkeep around the yard with it. And since it's a government-to-government transfer, they've given us a pretty good deal. If you remember, our price for a single Wilkins trailer was $97,000. We got a small price break by buying two. But we feel pretty good that this trailer, originally would probably be a third backup trailer, but there's a pretty good chance we're going to need it. Better to have a $40,000 backup trailer than a $95,000 backup trailer.
And the trailer and the tractor both 2004?
The tractor is a 1997 Freightliner. It has 285,000 miles on it. Joe Lewandowski that works with us in solid waste has seen the truck run in the last two weeks. Said it runs great. And in the world of trucks, 285,000, that's a grand deal. And it has an engine that's not a Detroit, which makes her any happier to come to this. This current model, this current model Freightliner typically come with a million-mile warranty. We're not getting any warranty on this one.
No.
Now, Mayor, I make a, well, I guess we already did that, didn't we? No, we haven't yet. I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2014-13, Budget Adjustment Number 7 for fiscal year 2014.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2014-13, Budget Adjustment Number 7. Is there any other discussion or questions? This is being paid out of the solid waste department. All right, roll call vote?
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Segada?
Yes.
Commissioner Finelli?
Yes.
Mayor M.
Yes. Motion passes. City Managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We are still taking applications for the various boards. And a reminder that the Financial Advisory Committee, we will be accepting applications until April 22nd. This is the only one that we have set a deadline date on. And so at this point, we do not have anyone to bring up before you tonight. Next item, cash reserve. We did receive more small city assistance than we projected, but we will speak more at the next meeting when we discuss the budget and how much less or more revenues we receive in all areas. Maybe using it to help make up some of our shortfalls, as you well know. Otherwise, we will continue working toward our goal of 3/12 cash reserve instead of a minimum 1/12. But we'll just see how things go for the remainder of the year and how the grocery receipts, tax, and our other revenue comes in. And we will bring up more of that at the budget box office. We've got a calendar here in just a few minutes, Mayor. Fiscal Legend, again, the county approved a fee today of 4%, 5%, and 6%. And we'll take up the MOU at their next meeting, but they requested County Manager Ms. Gonzalez to contact the COG to see if they can do it and maybe do it at a less charge than what the county is going to do. I will keep you informed and we'll see where we go from there. I ran into Representative Rush today down at the senior citizens. And I just asked him, I said, if you have the governor's ear, that if you could talk to her about her executive order. I understand of where she is coming from, but you have to look at, like us, that we're doing everything we can to get our fiscal house in order and so that our audit is going to be taken care of. There's nothing that has been, there's no malfeasance or misfending of the money. So she is really putting a hardship on us just on, if we take, if we have to go this way, we're talking about $8,400 coming out of our budget. Because she cannot use the grant money. We're talking about $8,400 out of our budget when we do the route at the senior citizens. And this will be every time. If this also happens, like on our $500,000 and $300,000 for the dam and $200,000 for the others, you know, we're talking a lot of money that has to come from our budget. So we're going to work and try to see what we can do. But I will keep you informed. Next item, Mayor and Commissioners, Commissioner Chavez was approached, and I have been approached before, about the street light at Park and Third. And so I had Mr. Pennscheck the light and all, but he also, I had him check with the DOT. And we learned that we would have to have a complete study of the traffic there before we can make any changes, and that our liability would be greater if we made any changes. With that being said, we're going to leave it as it is. That's my recommendation. I know that, I try to not go there unless I'm going to turn right. So, but I wanted to inform, I had informed Commissioner Chavez because he had brought it to my attention. And like I say, I have been approached before. And so I did have Mr. Penns in on, I want to thank him for the work that he did. You have in front of you, I ran a copy of a meeting that Mr. Reed attended on the multimodal update. I'd like to thank Mayor Mads, Mayor Pro Tem Segada, and Commissioner Chavez for attending the meeting that we had with Ms. Weston from Bohannon, Houston. And you see kind of a timeframe there of April the 25th and May 16th and June, we'll review by June 13th, review the May 16th. I will be talking with Ms. Weston and asking her to please keep us informed. But this gives you all the information that happened at the meeting with the Historical Preservation Department. Also gave you fiscal year 15 budget calendar. We will start our budget process at our next meeting at 5:00. It will be a workshop. This will also be a public hearing. Everyone is invited and welcome to attend. As I've explained to you before, after salaries, fringe benefits, our fixed costs, and everyday expenses going up, there's very little to discuss other than the hard decisions that have to be made to finance the running of the city. You know, I've tried to lay the foundation for the Commissioners of where we're at and where we're going. But as we get into the budget, and Ms. Mike Land will be putting the things together, I'll be giving her direction, and that works both ways for both of us back and forth, and we'll be presenting things. I want to commend Commissioner Chavez for removing the graffiti on the sidewalk at the post office. Thank you for doing that. I hear you got quite a crowd around you before it's all said and done, but thank you very much.
We did. Lots of supervisors. And there was a lot of supervisors telling me how I could do it.
Well, good, good, good.
And my wife was, um.
Was she leading it?
She was my cohort and she was keeping the back of my shirt so I wouldn't have any plumbers showing.
Got you. I understood. This old country boy, I understood that. I understood that.
But it was, it's removed effectively, and it wasn't offensive. And the reason I told everybody the fact is that the city was busy. The janitor at the post office said it wasn't on his property. So I just took it upon myself and we removed it.
Well, thank you very.
And I'm urging the people out there to do the same thing. If you pass a piece of trash, anything you do, help our community, just step down, pick it up. Anything you do pretty soon, it'll all be getting done. So thank you for that.
Thank you. I will follow up Commissioner Chavez's words, and you've heard me say this before. I again encourage everyone to help in cleaning up our city. Young people, I call on you to step up and take pride in what we have here. Also, the batters are already out. Please put your garbage out on your pickup day, and this will really help us. Mayor, I know you and the Commissioners are due diligence in your selecting of a city manager. We know time is of the essence for the new manager and the Commission to make some difficult decisions. As I've told you, I'll give you my best advice and direction, but you will be the ones, the new city manager, he or she, and the Commissioner are going to be the ones that are going to be living with the decisions that you make. And like I say, I will give you and the new city manager my best advice and direction, but realizing that this Commission.
The budget's up here, yeah, we know.
With that, then, Mayor, we go into Executive Session.
Now, Mayor, make a motion. We go into Close the Executive Session pursuant to NMSA 10-15-1H2, City Manager applicants.
I second that motion.
Do we have a roll call vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Segada?
Yes.
Commissioner Finelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Maff?
Yes.
Okay, and Mayor, uh, you said?
I think so.
I think Trish is all ready, and I've.